Good evening and welcome to the February 6, 2025 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. I will call the meeting to order. We're going to be led in prayer by Mark Atkins tonight, and Matt's going to lead us in our pledge, so if you would, please stand.
Father, we come to you this evening, Lord, just knowing we're getting ready to do the business of the town, and we ask for discernment and help our decisions be just and do the right things, Father. Lord, we also ask you to continue to watch over those that serve this town. Every employee, every staff member, every police and fire representative, Father, we just ask that you continue to watch over them and keep them safe with a hedge of protection. Lord, sometimes we just, many times, we forget the gratitude part of our lives. We're always complaining about what we don't have, and, Father, I just want to acknowledge that we have so much, and you bless us with so much, and we thank you for that. Go with us and forgive us of our sins. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
All right. Please turn at the flag and show me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal. Thank you. Our next agenda item is citizens' comments. We have none tonight? None tonight, okay. Then we're on to the approval of the minutes of the January 9, 2025 meeting, the minutes of the January 28, 2025 special call meeting, and approval of the minutes of the January 30, 2025 quarterly meeting. Counselor, are the meeting notes in order?
All appear to be in order, Chairman.
Any questions from the commission concerning the previous minutes?
Nothing, motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes from the previously noted dates, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. We are now on to old business. Our first item under old business was a preliminary plat, estates at Williamsport, Williamsport Drive, owner, developer, RMG Development, and I understand the developer's requesting a one-month deferral.
That is correct.
Okay.
Move to defer for one month.
Got a motion to defer for one month. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on the deferment? All those in favor of deferring this request, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is deferred. We are now on to site plans. First up is Seven Brew, southwest corner of President Place and Isabella Lane, owner, developer, Who Brew LLC.
Yep. This is a site plan for Seven Brew Coffee, which is proposing a new facility located at the corner of Isabella Lane and President Place. Building would be 750 square feet with two drive-through lanes only. There would be no service from the interior of the building. Cueing would approximately accommodate 23 vehicles in two stacking lanes. As shown, there is to be a single ingress and egress point of access off of Isabella Lane aligned across from the entrance to the Home Depot and Champies Chicken parking lots. In the picture up on the screen, you see where that sidewalk stops. The sidewalk does extend the full length of Isabella and Potomac, the entire length, so we do have full connectivity for the entire road frontage length of this site as well. Just wanted to throw that note in there. Vehicle use area for the site, 11,054 square feet, which does require 1,105 square feet landscaping. The number has been revised since the last, since when packets went out, so they are proposing for 1,331 square feet, still meeting our requirement. Parking required of eight spaces, and are showing for eight spaces, and that does require one handicap space, which they are showing. The landscape plan shows boxwood shrubs planted throughout the site with sugar maple and willow oaks. Due to the presence of the underground utility lines along Isabella Lane, streetscaping meeting design review requirements is not being met at this time, but the streetscaping precedes the entire length of the property along Isabella Lane. Along President Place, streetscaping for trees is not being met due to the pavement being built up to the edge of the property line. In lieu of that lack of streetscaping, they've added some additional landscaping along the islands on either side of that drive aisle. Architectural elevations show the building to be finished with a mixture of brick, glass glazing, fiber cement siding, and metal. All wall faces will meet the designer review requirement of at least 75% primary materials on all four sides. Standard comments, 1 through 6, will all remain at this time. Staff comment 1 is regarding the landscaping need designer view. We are now satisfied with it at this time, so comment 1 can be removed. Number 2, the architectural elevations, dumpster enclosure was shown to have fiber cement board siding, they have revised that for brick, so that comment has been addressed sufficiently. And comment number 3, we asked them to show a water surface line connecting to the main along President Place, which they have done and can now be removed. So, all staff comments have been addressed sufficiently and can be removed, and we are just left with the six standard comments with that staff would recommend approval.
Okay, questions or comments from the commission on this?
Mitch, I see some parking places. I would assume that's employee parking. This is, is this, this is not a dining type of place, is it?
Correct. It's my understanding there is no service from the inside of this building, it is just for employees to park, and so they're meeting our requirement.
Other questions or comments?
Really, because I have not talked to Charles, is this is kind of a blind code as they come out. If there's ever some, something creative we could do to help those drivers coming out of here, I don't know what it would be, because there's no other place for it.
Yeah, so, on the landscape plan, they do have a vision triangle they did note. If that is something that you're not satisfied with, with enough vision for the motors that are leaving the site, certainly we can ask them to back that landscaping up a little bit, if y'all feel so inclined to do so.
As I recall, the entrance has been moved so it sinks more in line with, I guess it's Home Depot and Champies and...
Correct, yeah. The last time that came on your agenda, last month, they had two different entrance and exit points, and we asked them to consolidate that across the street from where Champies and Home Depot parking lot is, to create that straight across access, which they have done, as we asked.
Okay. Is staff comfortable with the entrance where it's at?
Yes.
In relation to the road?
Yeah.
Charles, are you good with that as well? Okay.
This rework with the developer to get it moved down to that point, which did allow for more queuing in the parking lot, so we're comfortable with it.
Are you okay?
I am, but like I said, it just, I don't think there's, they've done the best they can do, I think.
Okay. It is a challenging piece of property there, and I think we've seen several different renditions of potential things that go there, and it seems to fit the best from what we've previously looked at. Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
A motion to approve with staff comments?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor of approving this site plan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Site plan is approved. The next item under site plans is Janet Ibrahim, Rocky Fort Road, owner, developer Janet Ibrahim, and it's my understanding that Ms. Ibrahim has requested a deferral.
Correct, one month.
One month deferral. Okay, quick.
Move to defer for one month.
Got a motion to defer for one month. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to defer for one month. Any further discussion? All in favor of this deferment request, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? This motion is approved and has been deferred for one month. We are now on to new business. Our first item under new business is a rezoning request, House on the Rock LLC, Enan Springs Road West, C2 to PRD rezoning request.
This property is located on Enan Springs Road West. The requested zoning is PRD, leaving Mount Athrav, the parcel to be zoned as C2. Surrounding zoning around this tract is C2 and C3. The land use plan for this area is part of the Depot District Character Area, and this would support a mixture of uses and services that are more urban in lot sizes and setbacks. Retail, restaurant, office, and attached residential and multifamily residential uses are particularly appropriate for this area. Major thoroughfare plan designates Enan Springs Road West as a minor arterial. Adequate right-of-way would be required to be dedicated for this street as part of a plat. The requested PRD is for 35 townhomes. Minimum fire floor requirement for this development will be 1,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI. Comment 6 is first of the real staff comments here. We asked them to show proposed utility extension throughout the site, and they have done so, so comment 6 can be removed. Number 7, we asked them to show better connectivity with sidewalks throughout the development project around Building G, which they have done so, so comment 7 removed as well. Comment 8, the parking spaces are required to be within 60 feet of the residential units they serve. There was some concern earlier about the, the way the site is laid out and designed that it was not going to be meeting that requirement. The applicant provided a diagram as part of their small package showing basically a radius around each of these units, and with a 60-foot buffer to show you adequate parking being provided for each of those units within that 60-foot. So, with that, if staff does feel comfortable removing comment number 8. Comment 9, we asked them to label the correct bus shelter location, and the shelter should not be located within the right-of-way. It is still shown within the right-of-way, so that comment will remain. Number 10, the, we asked if the homes were going to be used for rentals or for sale, and the applicant has noted that they were, will be for-sale units. And number 11, regarding the back of the property being along the CSX right-of-way, we asked them to confirm that the buildings within the development would be 100 feet off of the center line of railroad tracks, which would be that area for the, for CSX. Verified the location of the railroad easement with CSX, and we asked if there are any structures of any kind approved to be located within there behind CSX. Looks like the back of some of the units patio area would be within that area. Provide confirmation about the playground patio structures and HVAC units being allowed to be located within the CSX easement. We would like to leave that comment, get some confirmation from CSX in writing that they have reviewed and approved this plan within their right-of-way area. So, comments 6, 7, 8, and 10 have all been addressed sufficiently and can be removed. With that, it does meet all of our requirements, as far as recommendation is concerned. Staff believes it probably best fit for this tract to have a, more of a mixed-use, live-work style development going here rather than straight townhome-style development and kind of parshened off commercial. So, that's staff's recommendation on this, but it does meet all of our requirements that we have asked them to meet.
Mitch, can you go back a slide to, yeah, it shows the, so that was the first thing that kind of jumped out at me is completely surrounded by commercial, and we're putting residential right in the middle of it, generally is not, especially not against C2, which is our least restricted commercial.
I noticed that right away when I looked at this, this week. It feels a little bit like a spot zone, really, with all the C2 wrapped around it, C3, it's all commercial.
Is this the same developer for the one we reviewed several months ago for the same exact person?
I can't remember if we actually seen this one. We've, we've had it on our desk for points in time now, in and out, and with comments. Whether they've came for you, they...
We did.
Yeah, I think I recall.
Yeah, and I had, I had questions about who is responsible for the fence between the CSX railroad and the property to try to prevent, you know, the walkways that get inadvertently created over time. But I believe the last one that we saw on this property was very similar to this, and we either deferred it or passed on it because of the reasons that you stated. And there's no overlay for this location, is there?
No. Okay.
Can you talk a little bit about the number 8, the 60-foot, the parking spaces being within 60-foot of the residential units?
Sure. So, the ordinance requires a, all the parking spaces to serve those developments for which they're to be lived in, to have, sort of, all the parking spaces allocated for it within a adequate walking distance, which would be 60-foot. So, we asked them to show the distance between where those units are all at and where those parking spaces to serve each of those units would be located at, to verify that requirement's met. There was some concern with a previous rendition of this plan that that requirement was not being met due to layout and design. There was an additional building next to Building G, and that was really where a lot of the concern came from, but that has since been removed. It's in the large plan you have, and bringing up the small booklet. Couple pages, right? It has a pattern of... It's like about page four.
Hey, just for clarification, where, Lowry Street overlay, what are the boundaries for that?
It's, and we're looking almost right at it. It's on our, on the other picture we got there, the, you can see where it says CDD up in the top-left corner, that's part of it. Everything that's hatched basically is where that large overlay is located, so it's adjacent to it.
I was trying to recall how far we took it.
It's, it's close, it's just not this property.
Okay. I think all the property behind it is part of the historic overlay of it. No, is it? Not, not all historic, just front street portion?
The large overlay does continue a little bit further down, there's...
It goes down to the trailer park there, I think, doesn't it?
Not sure if it, based on, for the historic district?
Yes.
Not sure about the trailer park.
I think it goes right down beside the old feed store.
It's approximately that generic location, though, yeah.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Did the applicant give you any sense why they went residential rather than commercial?
Have not. Applicant is here tonight if you'd like to ask them.
I'll tell you what, I'll allow that if you'll come up and give us your name and address, please.
Jack Parker, Catalyst Design Group, 1524 Williams Drive, Murphysburg, Tennessee. So, we are the civil engineer that is here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, Charles, do you have a question?
Any sense why they went residential rather than stay with the commercial zoning?
Well, I, I believe they have an intent to develop a portion of it as commercial, but based on their, their business model, they're, they didn't have a product that would fit the large portion of the site, so they, they carved off a portion of that for residential, which sounds like is, is part of the future land use plan for this area. And if you, if you note, there is existing R2 that's one, one parcel over from, from this one. So, it's, it's not that there's no residential in the area, it's just that it's separated by, by one other parcel, which has been there since I was a kid growing up in Smyrna, you know, I think it was, it was Ballfields back in the day, but...
Still is.
You know, currently, the, the thought would be that there's plenty of commercial here, but it's the future land use plan envisions there being a mix of residential and commercial uses. Our thought is that this would be a, a good candidate for, for a residential piece. So, that's, that's why we've, we've proposed this. Commissioner Carver, you're correct, this, you have seen this plan before or a version of it. This one is quite a bit different than the last one you saw. The, the previous version had 41 units, this has been pared down to 35. We wanted to increase the amount of open space, provide more amenities, make it more walkable, which we've done with the pedestrian connections. We've, we've eliminated kind of some of the, the strange dead-end connections that were originally shown, so that, that we don't have any issues with, with fire access, and moved the, you know, the trash enclosure, you know, back further in the property, so that thing's not, you know, being seen as you're driving down Enan Springs there. And we've basically eliminated the bulk of the surface parking, which, which I believe was, was a cause of concern previously. You'll see now that every unit has, has a garage, where in the, the previous concept there were only, I believe there was only one building that, or maybe two, that showed garages, and the rest were all surface parked. So, the, the intent and the effort has been there to address those concerns. So, we, we, we feel like this is a, a good plan that, that represents a, a community that, that is urban enough to be settled in with these commercial uses while still having, having an open space feel for the residents. There's, there's 30% open space now, we, we increased that from 20 to 22%, I think is what we had originally.
Any other questions?
So, sorry, Jack, there's eight units in here, so the back two buildings, the interior of those units do not have garages. Everything else does have a garage, though, at least a one-car garage.
I think I counted six or eight two-car.
Yes, the end units, yeah.
Well, so, you mentioned the R2, I think the R2 is probably on Hazelwood Drive, if I'm not mistaken.
It is.
Yeah. This is Enan Springs. It's a different road altogether.
Sure.
And I don't know if you've driven that road about 4:30 or 5 o'clock, but it'll back up from the light almost all the way back to Hazelwood Drive. Adding rooftops here on a small tract of land is a little concerning to me. In addition, to Steve's point, we do our best to try to stay pretty contiguous with our zoning, you know, keeping not-spot zoning. I understand the land use plan a little bit, I get the part that it kind of serves downtown and so forth, but I've said this before, and I don't mind repeating it, when I see three and four-acre tracts trying to jam a bunch of townhomes on it, it, to me, we've seen a lot of that, we've heard about it quite a bit as well, so that's where I can fall on the concept itself.
Yeah, I, I agree pretty much with everything you said, Mark. The other thing that I've, you know, we, we haven't officially put in our new PRD requirements yet, but there, if those were in place, there's lots of things this one aesthetically doesn't meet as well. And that's been my concern, I mean, they pretty much just look like apartments, look like cookie cutter apartments, that's what they look like. So, I don't, the elevations to me just aren't, don't, don't fit what we even did for the future.
Will a bus go back here, or will they be stopping on the main road there?
The bus wouldn't go into that.
So...
They're private drive. They, they might, but that's up to the school board, right?
There's a bus shelter out on the...
They, they show a bus shelter, but that doesn't mean they're going in there.
Yeah, it's a school.
It's a fair question, yeah.
Anything else from Mr. Parker? Thank you, sir. Mitch, if I heard one other thing, I, I think I heard it would be staff's preference that this would be more live-work and maybe commercial along the entire...
If we're going to have townhomes, that'd be the preference.
The entire frontage of Enan Springs there, is that, did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, I mean, that's one way to put it, yeah.
Other questions or comments?
Of course, it's always a concern when you have residents right at a railroad track.
You ask one more question?
Oh, sorry.
Don't know what happened there.
Is that a no?
Yeah, well, yeah, I'll let, allow you.
Thank you.
Sounds like an executive order to me.
I was just gonna, to offer or ask the question, if the applicant was, was willing to make all of those units along Enan Springs Road a live-work product, does that, does that alleviate any concern there?
You asking me or anybody?
I'm asking the commissioners if, if that, if that is helpful.
I'm just speaking for me. There's six others here, but for me, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't make much difference for me, you still have the residential on a really busy road next to C2, and facades and buildings that, to me, just look very utilitarian, so that wouldn't make a, make a difference to me.
I'm hearing maybe if it were an office professional complex, maybe.
That's what it's zoned for.
Yeah, for the entire...
For the entire place.
Project.
That's what it's zoned for.
And you're just looking for some feedback?
Yes, just, I, I heard what staff is saying about it being live-work, and I thought...
That's fair, we appreciate you asking.
Okay. All right, anything else for staff or any other questions or comments in general? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to deny the request. Based on zoning.
Okay. I have a motion to deny this request based upon inconsistent zoning.
I'll second.
Second, motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor of denying this request, please by signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This request has been denied. Okay, next up, again, looks like we're still under a rezoning request, Caravan Ventures, Trident Drive, C2 to I1 rezoning request.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request for C2 to I1 on Trident Drive. It's currently a vacant tract of land, back behind the Speedway property that is right there on Trident. The surrounding zoning is C2 for this area. The land use plan for this area is part of the 24 gateway character area, which would support a mix of uses and services that are both local and regional in scale, which would include hospitality, retail, restaurant, multifamily, uses which are particularly appropriate for this area, and no roads shown on the major thoroughfare plan would be affected by this request. Staff would recommend approval of this request, we feel like industrial, light industrial really is appropriate for this area backed up to I-24 and mixture of other industrial uses at the end of Trident Drive.
Most of that surrounding it zoned industrial or light industrial already?
So, you have C2 on north and south side. South side is the property that was east of the gun range last year or two years ago, and then the other tracks further back are all light industrial as well.
So, we have a mix of commercial and industrial in this area?
Correct.
Have we looked at this before, once before, or is...
There's another page.
Not this tract, the tract with the south.
It was close to it? Yeah, okay. Questions for Mitch on this one?
So, do we, do we see that being C2 as a usable C2 spot because of its location, or does it tend to service more of an industrial use anyway?
And the clientele in the back is primarily geared towards industrial.
Well, that's my, that's the reason I'm asking the question, to get C2 back there, I'm not sure it's the appropriate type of place to necessarily try to draw a C2 business, a bank, a restaurant, or whatever, you know, so...
We, we get any feedback on what industrial plan they're thinking about?
Yeah, the applicant is heavy equipment, like forklift, dealer, repair-type service.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I will entertain a motion then.
A motion that we approve?
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Real quick, what's that to below it? What is that on the corner there below the building?
Oh, where are you talking about?
Kind of southwest.
The I-2 there?
Yeah, is that I-2? I mean...
Are you talking about right here?
No, 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 up, up, left, no, to your left, right there. No, 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 no. Up, up, left. No, to your left, right there. What is that?
That's Speedway. That's the gas station.
I thought it was, but I turned around a little bit, so. And that's commercial.
Yes.
Will you make sure Kevin has one of those pointers in the future?
I got you.
Thank you.
Can you give one to the whole council?
Actually, I actually have one personally that I'm gonna stick in this drawer. I thought about it earlier. I should bring this and stick it in the drawer so we can pass it around.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second, Mark. Anything further?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of approving this rezoning request, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this rezoning request is approved. Now we're on to preliminary plaits. The first one is Lindwood, Section 1, Phase 1 and 2, Ambleville Road. Owner, developer, stars and stripes, 30 LLC, St. Burke.
This is Section 1, Phases 1 and 2 for the Lindwood subdivision. You did see the sketch plat for the overall Greer development a couple of months back, so we're getting closer to actually developing out this way. So this is the, like I said, first section, first Phase 1, 2 for the Lindwood development. Comments, 1, 2, and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 really are all standard comments. Anyhow, over thirty-six hundred square foot would require a required minimum fire flow requirement. There's additional requirements above that thirty-six hundred square foot threshold, so. Comment 8, we asked them to submit E91 approval for the road names and to submit the road name approval via PDF. There were a couple of road names that have not been approved within the development, so the applicant did submit a revised email over to us and we're still working through making sure those names are approved and good, so we'll keep comment number 8 at this time. Number 9, the stream buffer requires an average width of sixty-foot with a minimum of thirty feet, and they did dimension label it, so comment number 9 has been addressed efficiently. Comment 10, we asked them to label the existing contours at a two-foot interval on the plat sheets, which they have done so accordingly, so comment 10 can be removed. Number 11, it appears that there is proposed work within the Rutherford County Road right-of-way on Drew Street. There will need to be coordination between Rutherford County Highway Department for this part of the development and more or less that's a standard comment, which I just wanted to point it out, so comment number 11 will remain. Number 12 is regarding the traffic study between this development and the surrounding developments, which will include Reverie and Music City, Riley Downs, and the Queen Cliff Development. There was a meeting earlier this week between town manager Kevin Charles and the applicant to kind of go over what the traffic study recommended, so discussions with that are currently ongoing. But with that, we would still like to keep comment number 12 at this time. Number 13, there's a stream buffer comment, and that has been addressed accordingly around those lots 128 and 129. Comment 14, asked them about four parking spaces provided on each lot and asked if the garage will be set back at least thirty-five feet. And to show this on a typical lot layout, the lots will need to be able to accommodate the four parking spaces for each of these units. Driveways are shown to accommodate two vehicles, so we need to figure out a way to whether it be a setback thirty-five feet for the garages or provide additional on-street parking for either the residents or guests, what have you. So that comment will remain at this time as a result of that. Number 15, Sunrise Street, Ledger Road, Radiance Way, and Glowstone Trace, Terrace, rather, should be labeled and constructed as a residential collector streets, not residential minor streets, per the requirements of the subregs, and that comment has been addressed accordingly. Sixteen, we asked them to show the public utility and drainage easement for the drainage swells on the lots, rear of lots 103 to 111. That has been shown. Crossing lots 135 through 137, that has not been shown. Lots 25 through 32 have been shown, and then lots 92 through 98 have not been shown. So lots 103 to 111 and lots 25 to 32 have been shown sufficiently. Lots 135 through 137 and 92 to 98 still need to be shown and labeled, so amending that comment, and we'll keep it. Number 17, we asked them to use the correct road cross-section based on the subregs, and they have done that. Eighteen, to show the public utility and drainage easement for the sewer line which crosses open space number five. That has been done. Comment number five, there is a roundabout area that is shown to be open space. This can be, they need to show that as part of the HOA maintenance area. Town will not maintain area within the roundabout even though it is part of the right-of-way, so that's gonna be shown as part of an agreement. That will remain. Comment number 20 and 21 are both CUD comments as this does lie within the CUD service area. So all that to be said, comments number nine, 10, 13, 15, amended 16, 17, and 18 have all been addressed and can be removed, and with that, staff would recommend approval.
We've had this PRD for quite some time.
Nine or ten years.
Yeah. And so much of this approval predated, I'm trying to remember, when was our last PRD change? Was it about two years ago when we...
With Park.
Yeah, with Park. It was about two years ago, and we're getting ready to look at another. So I guess my question is, and looking at, you know, the garage setbacks being at least thirty-five feet, how does that reconcile with what's been previously approved where we, where thirty-five feet was not a requirement? What would, you know, was this where we looked at garage and drive, or was this just, I mean, that's why I'm asking for some help here. What, when we approved this, where were we at in regards to that?
I obviously was not here running this original thing back in the day.
Okay.
So I can't speak to that at least.
You weren't born.
I was born, I can say that. But I did speak with Kevin about this yesterday. We did verify that this would have to meet the ordinance requirement of what the four feet, the four parking space requirement is, even though this was approved years ago.
Because it hasn't been as subjected as a plat yet, is that the reason why? Counsel?
Well, I have not talked to Kevin as he has. However, I would assume because the vesting period has ended for that, I believe. So they haven't begun construction within three years, and so I believe that's probably why he's saying that those...
If I hear you're right, it's a requirement, correct? It's not really a yes or no or maybe. It's a requirement to meet the ordinances that are out there for today.
Correct, since the vesting has expired under the statute.
Is that for all, not just for parking though, right? Is everything, I mean, can we bring this up to today's PRD standards?
No.
I'm confused.
Wait, say that again, yeah, 'cause I just got confused on that.
It doesn't have to meet new PRD standards, but it must meet the parking regulations?
Yeah, so like the lot sizes. Lot sizes were locked in as part of PRD. That's something we can't do.
Okay, so that's done.
Setbacks, those type of items, we cannot change.
Okay. Well, and to be honest, I mean, we know what two cars in the driveway has done in other subdivisions, so I get it. I mean, I understand why we do it that way. I just want to make sure it was required because we got people out here submitting it in a way that maybe thought this body could do something different, but it doesn't sound like with parking that they could. Am I right?
That is my understanding.
Yeah, okay. Jeff, do you see it that way as well?
Yeah.
With the vesting? With the vesting expiration, you see that as...
Correct.
Okay. I just want a definition because I know we got applicants that probably will wonder why those things are being mandated. Here's a question we've done before. Mitch, you may know the answer to this. I'm only asking out loud because I don't know. As long as the garage is thirty-five foot back, the elevation in some subdivisions we've done can be twenty-five?
Yeah, they actually have a thirty-five.
So I don't know if that's a...
Twenty-five foot. They have a twenty-five foot is what they're showing currently, so I mean, that's pretty standard of what we're seeing nowadays anyways.
So as long as the garage is thirty-five feet back, that's the main thing? The driveway space and the stacking space?
Yeah, I mean, or we can go and have, you know, on-street parking, parallel parking, however you want to. That's another option.
I think we want to go there.
Yes. Typically, we're gonna have that.
Well, you're right, Mark. I do recall that, that we've had several approvals where the elevation of the structure itself, the living space, is twenty-five, and then we've had the garage space at thirty-five.
Well, in certain lot sizes, we sort of worked with the developer on it, but I know we've got, this is probably, as I looked at the master... Are these the smallest lots to come in here, or do we know? They are? Yeah, that's all Reverie. That's the church. I think these are the most challenging of the approved lot sizes that we had. Am I correct? So if we, if the developer, builder, whoever it is, wanted to do the twenty-five foot elevation with a thirty-five foot garage setback, that would be permitted, and in future phases with larger lots, we would not necessarily have to compromise. That is understandable.
The twenty-five foot setback is something that was part of the PRD originally, so...
That's why I'm asking the question.
And they could still build up to twenty-five now.
Okay, all right. I thought it was, but I wasn't. It's been a while, so.
Okay, other questions or comments concerning this plat? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
We've approved this before. We're at the site prep, or this planning phase of the plat now. I would make the motion, because it's already an approved development, I would make the motion that the thirty-five foot garage setback still applies, but a twenty-five foot setback for elevation would be permitted. And staff comments?
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this preliminary plat, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this plat is approved. Okay, it looks like we're now on to final plaits. Our first is Riley Downs, Section 1, Phase 1, Rocky Fork Road. Owner, developer, South Coast DFH Nashville LLC.
Yep, this is the first section and phase of Riley Downs' development. Comments, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, and 7 really are all standard comments. Comment number 8, we asked to revise note 12. There was some additional verbiage in there. We asked them to remove, and they have done that, so comment 8 can be removed. Comment number 9, the floodplain development from application has not been received for this project, so I'd like to keep that comment. And comments number 10, 11 are CUD standard comments since it does lie within the CUD service area. Staff would recommend approval with the remaining comments.
And this is consistent with what's previously been submitted and approved?
Correct.
Okay.
Chairman, I'm not gonna vote on this or the next one. Catherine's the other.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Amy. Do I have a second?
I'll second, but I also have a quick question about...
Okay, so I've got a motion and a second. Now, further discussion?
Just a quick question about traffic studies. Any improvements to Rocky Fork, I mean, to Ambleville Road? Is any of that, anything in that?
Charles, can you speak to that a little bit?
Just thinking about a turning lane or in or out.
Well, currently, this is in our section that is under design and is in right-of-way acquisition. Now it comes down to that point to Derby Run, so it is within our road project that is currently in progress.
So it's being considered as part, yeah, okay, that's it.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this final plat with staff comments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this final plat is approved. We're now on to our next and final final plat, Riley Downs, Section 1, Phase 2, Rocky Fork, Ambleville Road. Owner, developer, South Coast DFH Nashville LLC.
A lot of the same comments for this development as the last one is. This is the second phase. Comments 1 through 5, standard comments all remain. Comment number 6 was a comment made by the utilities department after, regarding the lift station improvements at Reverie Music City. After the applicant spoke with the utilities department, it was determined that comment can be removed, is not relevant, so comment number 6 can be removed. Number seven is, seven and eight are both standard comments as well that will remain. Comment 9, similar as the last one, we asked them to remove some verbiage from note 12, which they have done. That can be removed. Comment 10, the sidewalks along Mammoth Trace and were shown to the right-of-way dedication, were extended further than the dedication line for the right-of-way on Rocky Fork, Hollinville, so we asked them to bring that back, and they have done so accordingly. So that comment can be removed. Number 11, the floodplain development from application has not been received yet for this project. Comment will remain, and 12 and 13 both are CUD comments as well. So comments 6, 9, and 10 can all be removed, and then the rest will remain, and staff would recommend approval with those remaining comments.
Okay, questions for Mitch on this? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments minus 6, 9, and 12, is that right?
Six, nine, ten.
Six, nine, and 10.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this final plat, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this plat is approved, and you've got Mark abstaining, correct? All right, we are now on to site plans. Our first is Seward's Landing, OutParcels 4 and 5, Allen Seward Way, owner, developer, Equitable Property Company.
This is a site plan for lots, OutParcels 4 and 5, within the Seward's Landing development. Four buildings would be built on these two tracts with two buildings on each parcel. The proposed use for these buildings would be a mix of office and retail space among the forty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-six square feet of building space. The parcels would be located at the main entrance to Seward's Landing Development off of West Sam Ridley Parkway and would have shared parking with primary points of access from Allen Seward Way and Pilot Place. Vehicle use area for the site, 3.41 acres, which would require point three-four acres of landscaping. They're shown for a half acre. Total park required of two-hundred-and-seven spaces, and they're shown for two-hundred-and-thirty-one. Seven handicap parking spaces are required, and they're shown for nine. Landscape plan shows a variety of street trees and ornamental trees planted throughout the site to be developed along all of the right-of-ways. Nearly all the islands around the parking areas contain a mixture of shrubs and trees. Trees along Sam Ridley Parkway West are shown within the right-of-way, and staff will need approval from the, from T-Dot for, to allow the vegetation within their right-of-way. Architecture elevations show the buildings to be finished in a mixture of brick, limestone, ephes, metal veneer, and glass and glazing. Four colors of brick are shown to be used, including black, white, gray, and peach color. All elevations are to have a minimum seventy-five percent primary materials for all the wall faces, which would meet our design rerequirement. Standard comment 1 through 6 will all remain at this time, and comment number, staff comment 1, we asked to provide back the landscaping comment, T-Dot approval for that landscaping within their right-of-way. Number 2, asked to provide the maximum number of tenants in the units, and they have done that as well, so that comment can be removed. Comment 3, we asked that the minimum road width to be twenty-six feet for any of the buildings over thirty feet tall. This is currently in discussion with the fire department, and the applicant is aware of this comment as well, and has, didn't have enough time to redesign the site to turn it back around to staff before smittle for this week's, for the meeting, so the applicant is working on revising that to meet the requirement of the twenty-six feet. Fire department also agrees that this is something that's pretty easy to solve and can be done. Comment number 4, the minimum fire flow is gonna be seventeen fifty at twenty PSI. Buildings A and C will require a fire sprinkler system, which the applicant has noted they are intended to be sprinkled. And no FDCs are allowed on the building, and a fire hydrant must be within one hundred feet of the FDC. feet of the FDC. This is in our comment that the applicant is aware of and has been working with the fire department to come to a resolution on, and the applicant is in the process of redesigning to meet those requirements, so not too much of a concern from a staff comment, staff perspective on those comments at least. So, with that, staff would recommend approval with those above-listed comments. Staff comment two is the only one that has been removed at this time, with everything else remaining.
Okay, questions for Mitch on this?
Mitch, did, did they get approval for a red light at that entrance to Sam Ridley?
I don't...
I thought we...
Oh, yes, they have put in for that traffic signal there, and the addition of the other, the third lane coming from the bridge over Lowry all the way down to Motlow, so they are in design with that, but they have gotten permission to move the opening also down approximately a hundred feet or so.
Towards, say, down?
Towards, towards the bridge.
Towards Lowry.
You can see it there, yeah, and they've moved...
To distance the lights?
Yeah, to get a greater distance between there and the light at Motlow College.
Yes, Steve was, we were just talking about the left turn coming out of there, without a light might be a little tricky.
Yeah, but they're all going to make improvements to Motlow, they are going to put a left through and right turn lane coming out of Motlow, they will be doing an additional lane coming out of there.
What do you think the odds are of them getting the signal there?
Should be good, everything's going, I don't know if the developers here, but talks I've been on with them, that that's been, that's in the works. I don't know if they've gotten their formal approval, but I haven't heard anything coming back, because they've gone through the process to get the gap opening there in the fence, so they have gone through the excess land committee at T-Dot for that.
Thanks, Charles. Are the sidewalks closer to Sam Ridley? They just don't show on this plan.
Are you talking up Allen Seward Way, or?
Because if you look at this one, the setback, this is all T-Dot.
Yeah.
So their property is, I don't know how many feet, thirty, forty, fifty feet from Sam Ridley. So sidewalk over on Sam Ridley would basically not even be usable.
Didn't we approve sidewalks on this project?
Not along Sam Ridley.
Interior.
Interior, yes, not along Sam Ridley though.
Does it meet our expectations for the grand entrance that we had talked about?
It's, it is a grand entrance, they are limited as far as that, as Steve was just mentioning, the width of the right-of-way of Sam Ridley makes it really tricky on them to do anything within the T-Dot right-of-way, and you have to get permission for that. So, by that landscaping comment that we have, they are trying to increase the overall aesthetic of the entrance to this site. Once again, it's subject to a T-Dot approval, but landscaping is really prevalent on the front of this site, and really throughout this entire site along all the right-of-ways.
Yeah, and if I remember correctly, as you pass these buildings, there's a roundabout that would be the first thing you see, and of course, that's, you can kind of see half of it in the very top of this one, and then that roundabout was a pretty big feature that kind of brings you in, so I think it kind of draws your attention down to that as the grand entrance.
It's sort of like a medical center.
Yeah.
Stone entries and things like that. It's going to be an amazing project, it gets going and gets done, it's really a, I think something Swerden can be proud of.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
To approve with staff comments, and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving this site plan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this site plan is approved. Our last site plan for the evening is Spring Branch, phase two, Ledbury Drive, Salinger Way, owner, developer, Green Trails.
This is going to be the second phase of the Spring Branch development. This would have ten single-family homes and fifty townhomes as part of this phase. Access to the site would be off of Ledbury Drive and Salinger Way. All amenities, mail kiosks are located within the first phase of this development, and there would be a future phase three part of the development as further back in this development. Square footage of vehicle or use area, just over one acre, and that would acquire four thousand four hundred and seventeen square feet of landscaping. Applicant is proposing for four thousand seven hundred and thirty-two, meeting our requirement. Total parking required of two hundred and sixty-five spaces, and they're showing for two hundred and sixty-five. Landscape plan shows a variety of locations of existing and preserved vegetation, remaining with additional trees planted near most of the townhomes and in front of all the single-family dwellings proposed as part of this phase. Shoreberry is proposed to be lining the front of all the roads and along the sidewalk area. Similarly to phase one, the architectural elevations show the front elevations to consist of fiber cement board, brick, and/or stone material. Side and rear elevations are shown to be primarily fiber cement board with the option for some of the units to have the addition of brick or stone. Standard comments, one through seven, would all remain at this time, we have the one staff comment, the town will not be able to provide fire flow protection for the rear units of this phase, which would be units one thirty-five through one fifty-four, until Imperial Boulevard improvements are made unless the units are sprinkled. With that, staff would recommend approval with the above-listed comments.
Questions for Mitch, staff on this?
Just for clarification, Ledbury will be opened at this point of the phase.
They are tying in Ledbury as part of this phase, yes.
Other questions or comments?
This is probably not anything to do with the site plan, but where Ledbury comes in, we had an issue take place back there, and it was all kind of clear-cut, did they take care of that residential portion with the berming and all that?
Yeah, I've been in discussion with the applicant on this overall site, and working with them, and they've been really diligent to work with the surrounding property owners to figure out what a happy medium is for everyone.
I know they went out and accidentally cut down some trees.
Yeah, but everyone seems to be happy with it.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's my main thing, so...
Anything further from the commission?
Anything on, you mentioned Imperial Boulevard improvements, anything, what's the future plan of that?
It would be, the reason for the comment is there's a water line upgrade back there. I believe it's currently under design, not a hundred percent sure on that, not sure really on timing, but are we talking overall improvements back there?
Oh, I'm just thinking, Imperial Boulevard is kind of the key to traffic on Roxbury. The future of it.
It's on the major thoroughfare plan, but the project has not been moved forward.
Other questions or comments? I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments from Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor of approving this site plan, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, this site plan is approved, I'm sorry?
No.
No, okay, sorry. Okay, we are now on to the February bond review report.
We got several tonight, but we got quite a bit that can be released, hopefully, so without further ado. Woodcrest subdivision, section three, development is a hundred percent built out, a couple minor issues here, did not hear back from the developer prior to the packets being delivered, staff would recommend release if the work is completed by the expiration date, if not, extend it an additional three months. Westover, phase one B, this is once again a hundred percent built out, a couple of public works comments regarding the drainage issues to sort through, but the developer has indicated that they intend to complete everything by the expiration date and to release it if they're able to do so, so staff would recommend if they're able to get that completed to remove, to release it, otherwise extend it three months. Blakeney subdivision, section three, phase one, it is just under seventy-one percent built out, we've only had this one for about two and a half years now, but we would recommend to extend that another six months to allow the developer to continue work on the site. Blakeney subdivision, section two, phase three, next one we have is section two, phase two, and then it's phase two, section two, phase one, so all these are all in the same boat here, development is a hundred percent built out, the developer does indicate that they are able, believe they are able to get the punchless items secured and finished before the expiration date hits, so for all three of these, section two, phases three, two, and one, we would recommend to release the bond if they're able to get that completed, otherwise extend it three months. Blakeney, section one, phase two, same as section two, phases one through three, this is a hundred percent built out, and the developer believes this is, and these are items that can get taken care of prior to the expiration date hitting, so we would recommend releasing this if they are able to complete those by the expiration date, otherwise extend it three months. Westover, phase one A, this is a hundred percent built out, list of public works comments to sort through and fix, but the developer has indicated they intend to do all those items by the expiration date, and to, they have asked that we release if they're able to do so, so staff would recommend that we release if they're able to get that all completed, otherwise extend it three months. Sundale, section two, this development is about a third built out currently, quite a bit of items to address and take care of, but once again, is fairly new bond still, and don't have much of the development built at this time yet, so the developer has asked that they're still working on this development and hope to have the pavement completed before summer, staff would recommend to extend this six months. Rookers Bend, section one, phase two, development is twenty-two percent built out, but it is still a relatively new bond since we have only received it last year in March, so the developer has indicated that these houses in this development are selling slower than some others, so they would, we would recommend a one-year extension on this. Portico Place Town Home Section Subdivision, the development is just over half-built out currently, and there's a list of public works items to be addressed as part of this, the developer has indicated that they have completed all the items except for the final asphalt, and they have extended, asked that we do extend this bond, staff would recommend to extend this one year due to only having the bond for one year at this time. Woodcrest subdivision, section five, that is a hundred percent built out, there's a few public works items to address and take care of, did not hear back from the developer prior to the packets being delivered at this time, so staff would recommend we release if the work is completed by the expiration date, otherwise extend it three months. Sam Davis Property, this is a, the bond for the plat that we recently saw a site plan for come through a couple months ago, no work has started on this development yet, the developer has indicated they will talk to the contractor and get back to us, we have not heard back from them yet at this time, we would recommend extending this one year. Derby Run, phase two A, it is a hundred percent built out, the developer has indicated that almost all of the homes are built, and they plan to make curb cuts and pave in the spring, summertime this month, this year, and asked we extend it six months, so staff would recommend to extend this bond six months. Walnut Ridge, section one, development is a hundred percent built out, a list of public works comments to sort through for them, but did not hear back from the developer prior to the packets being delivered, staff would recommend that we release if they are able to get the, these line items completed prior to the expiration date, otherwise extend it three months. That is all.
Okay, we've heard from staff concerning the bond review report, are there any questions?
Only one comment, the Westover, phase one A, item number seven was related to neighbor and some drainage issues, your recommendation to extend three months because that could be resolved, if it wasn't resolved, I just kind of paid special attention to that one, that seems like that could become a hornet's nest if it doesn't get resolved, so that's the only one I saw.
All right, thank you, Steve. Any other questions or comments? If not, do I have a motion?
Move to approve the bond review report with staff comments.
Have a motion to review the, or approve the bond review report with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor of approving the February bond review report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bond review report is approved. Staff comments or other business?
I have nothing to say.
Okay. Anything from the commission? Stand adjourned. Mitch?